The roll call.
It's the drug.
I'm here.
Craig, are you here? Jen, are you here?
I am here.
Sean, are you here?
Here.
Ray, are you here?
I am here.
Lou, are you here?
Yes.
Josh, are you here?
Here.
Dee's here? And anybody online, we will try, will you help me try to remember when people come on to extend?
Yes, and are you alone and all that, should I do?
So Tim will not be here.
Sean may or may not be on.
Okay.
There you go, dear.
So Lou, will you sit in for um Tim tonight?
No, only when you're in hearing.
Um Liz? Liz is um going to be joining us late, she wasn't sure if her sweetheart would be out of the hospital or not, so she will be yeah, joining us. Um I think things are fine, but she just had to, they had to do potentially some stuff today. Um John may or may not be joining us and we already said Tim won't, so.
About Nate?
Nate, yeah, Nate may come in, let's see what happens.
I think, I saw him last week, I can't remember if he said he was gonna be here or not this week.
I saw him Sunday, he said he was going on.
He was Monday, okay.
Otherwise, we could tell a story that his vacation just got really good and really long, you know. Alright, so uh let me pull up the agenda for today and we will start with a selectmen's report.
Good evening, so we had a lot of good things happening, um we started alo- um approvals for allocations and expen- expenditures of the ARPA funds. Um uh we approved last week the planning board's request uh for the twenty-five thousand dollars to rework the master plan. Um there's allocations for the police department, our moderator, DBW, uh Parks and Rec last night. And also um some money to see see the viability of um converting the old salt shed town garage to a community center. And I don't know, it just seems like there's a lot of good communication that's happening between the departments and a lot of forward progress that's kind of, you know, picking up steam, so.
Can I ask what a community center is?
It's a shared space for everyone in the community to utilize for whatever needs they may have, so it'll um service all age groups of the community. So.
So it's just like an empty house that you reserve a space and then you go in and use it?
Yeah, there'll be open time slots, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the plan is to hopefully have a nice big, you know, green lawn and there could be different activities, a bocce or whatever back there. Um so truly whatever the community comes up with and what the community's needs are, um that'll be what it becomes. Um and after, i- if we are able to um renovate that building in that area. Uh the idea is to have that be self-sufficient moving forward, so there won't be any additional costs to the town after this. Besides, you know, building upkeep down the line, but we should be good for a number of years.
So people pay to use it?
Yeah, some elements, like the rec department will charge for different functions that they may have there. Um you know, so there'll be, you know, free usage and fee usage for different programs.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I think the idea is great, but I don't understand why we were putting money into a town hall and why we would then put money into a community center. Why is it that we need both?
It's uh two different projects and the way that I'm looking at the new, like that community center, um location's a little bit better, it'll have its own parking, wholly. Um and it's a a truly a functional uh space, there's gonna be outdoor function.
Mm-hmm.
Um indoor and you have the indoor function, so it's more versatile, um but if we end up um choosing to go over, like it shift all functions through the whole town hall or a different facility down the line, we've at least improved that property and taken care of some of the um past issues that we've had on the property, because that's part of the plan as well. Uh to clean up uh some of the, like the debris, have soils tests conducted to find out what we're up against for contamination. And also um reset the pins, so we know where the lot line is and things like that. So it'll set us up to potentially, you know, sell it down the line and maximize the value of that property.
What kind of contamination do you think is there?
I don't even wanna guess, I don't know, I'm not sure, there's been a lot of things that um uh said, and then there's some soil samples, people that said that you'd be surprised. Like people think that their land's contaminated and we go undo our work and it's not above the acceptable levels. Or uh one example, uh one gentleman used with me is that they went out to uh like a junkyard essentially and they figured they're gonna get shut down. But they were within compliance for it, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, so it's not as scary as it sounds.
I allocated a lot of money on the big dig to get rid of contaminated soil and I can assure you it's really expensive.
No, no.
If it's above the limits.
Yeah, 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 but at least we'll know, right now we don't know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just a lot of uh theories of what could be there.
Any things?
That's it.
Okay.
Nate, came on.
Yep, hi Nate.
He's muted.
Alright, Nate, are you alone? You can do a thumbs up for Jen if you don't wanna be on audio. Or just the random kid running through.
Where'd it go?
Scared him away.
Alright, so we'll come back to Nate. Alright, um what have you got going on?
Um. Let's see. Uh so CAI just did an update tonight with me and I think currently when you look at your, the maps for the assessors, it gives a summary of the property instead of the actual tax card like we have on Avatar. And they're gonna be changing that, so it reflects the same thing as Avatar. Um. Other than that, I did have, I wanted to mention the other thing that we discussed, but probably not until we discuss it.
The uh cop- uh coffee? Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so Lindsay came and went over all the files that we have down cellar for lot line adjustments, subdivisions and all of that. Gave me a quote, which I only have until May thirteenth to confirm. Um the quote is seven thousand eight fifty-five, I think. To put all of the files in PDF format, have it on the computer, so that if somebody is looking for information, we can just email it to them. Make a copy right online instead of having to go down cellar, research it, they'll all be in order by map and lot and what subdivision number it was, as well as the name. So you'll be able to search either way. Um I am going to, if it's agreed on, and I have a copy of the quote, if you if you need to look at it. If it's agreed on, I'm gonna tell him to extend it because we may need to put that in the budget for next year or maybe ARPA fund.
A second ARPA request?
Yeah.
We could go into the bridesmaid category.
Yeah, so and I, for what they have to copy, even the big maps, everything, plans, I don't think that's too expensive.
Well, there's gotta be forty plus years of stuff down there.
Oh yeah, it goes back to the sixties.
Yeah.
How long are we supposed legally to keep?
Forever.
Yeah, that's the challenge is, now will you touch base with southwest southwest regional planning to find out about the regs that we have to keep paper copies?
There are, I've already looked for subdivision, lot line adjustments is forever, you can keep electronic copy.
Oh, as well, okay.
But the paper has to be forever.
Okay, so how are we doing on space downstairs? Someday I'm actually gonna have to go down there and be scared, I guess.
Well, um we're running out of space.
Okay.
Yeah, and and truthfully, all those records should be fireproofed and fireproof. Because if we ever had a fire, it would.
Well, once we decide what we're doing with other things, it probably wouldn't hurt for us to have a a storage area that's designed to to maximize what we can get out of it, because we're not alone.
Yeah. And there are things up on the top, we have a leak and they're all moldy and, I mean, that was way pre me, but.
Okay, so there's stable.
In my spare time, I I wanna get down there.
Okay, so let's let's take it one step at a time, but getting things digitized would mean we have a backup.
Right.
Which if something happened and and whatever fireproof area failed, then, okay, so let's let's just take it one step at a time. And I think we're also gonna have to do a cost benefit analysis of, you know, how much time do we go down there and hunt? And, you know, that type of thing, so let's let's take it one step at a time, it seemed to like a lot of money. But I guess sixty years, eight thousand dollars, we're down to under three hundred dollars a year, you know, for for that. But one step at a time, we might not do anything with it.
Okay.
We'll make a rec, we'll try and bring a recommendation to the next meeting about whether or not you guys wanna maybe take it to ARPA or whatever we wanna do, depending on what's what's out there.
What what does that all include? I mean, what what is, what's her her, how easy is it and how often are people looking? Not not necessarily that, but if you, what type of people are gonna be looking through these? Is it just for for us or for anybody?
Well, right for instance, Craven's Way, look at all all that we had to research on that alone.
Yeah.
And that was going downstairs, getting the files.
Yeah.
And I think when I was going through doing the subdivision spreadsheet, I found another file that wasn't even listed for Craven's Way, didn't have a subdivision number on it or anything, but it was part of it and it wasn't even near where all the other files were. So, um, I'd probably go down there, since I've been here. I'd probably go down there at least once a week to research and find something.
Yeah. And if we had it on there, would people be able to research them themselves or would it be primarily still going through you?
They can currently, they can currently access plans and minutes, right?
Yeah.
So a lot of the files are old minutes, but plans are already, Hillsborough County, they're publicly accessible. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily see these as being every little bit of like the bonds or, so I don't see this as being necessarily public, I see it being our work. So when we were meeting on Cravens, how many of us came here and pored over plans and file folders this big?
Sure, yeah.
We could have done that in the comfort of our own homes.
Yeah.
Potentially, potentially, um so I see it as helping our work as well as Jen, but I wouldn't necessarily see um that it would be, I mean, it could be freedom of information shifted if we chose to go that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Um but again, a lot of this stuff is is public, but what isn't public is like the reports from like if you need a state dredge permit. Or if you need, like all that kinda stuff is all kind of, just, I don't know if you've had to go through those files, but all the stuff we pulled through.
The only thing so far was the, we went through one, one of the subdivisions to see if it was closed, but but yeah, that's what I was just saying, is it, is it, you know, primarily for us? And to be more efficient in here, or is it, or is it more, would it be, would it extend to the public?
Yeah, for better records.
Yeah.
But if we did have a freedom of information request, you'd be able to get at it quicker potentially.
Right.
Yeah, or even answer it at all.
Right.
Yeah, because it takes so much time to go down and try to go through all of that.
If we have to keep.
And where it's by name or subdivision and with the subdivision spreadsheet, it's boom, it's very easy, it'll be very easy to research that. Then going downstairs and hoping that after I've already filed them in order, that somebody hasn't gone in there and put it somewhere else.
Yeah.
And lot, you know.
Yeah.
Like like I know when we're going through files, she's like, I don't want you to put them out of order, uh even if even if the order makes no sense to me, don't change the order, is the rules I know.
Yeah.
So I leave the tops out and then I flip to that page and then copy that page and then pull it back in line, you know, so there's a whole lot of, we don't need documents walking, we don't need, you know.
Yeah. I would imagine that given what you're just sharing, that there should, if if it's mandated, there should be state and federal standards for archiving our materials.
I don't know, it's a good question for Southwest Regional or you give your municipal if you can touch base with them.
Yeah.
And maybe even dollars to do this, because this, you're talking about a substantial cost. Uh you just don't put these records in a a top of the shelf and expect to get them fifty years later, because they deteriorate a hundred years later. There's gotta be something to it.
Is this a um, is this somebody who specializes in this kinda stuff? So the the good news is, there are times where we have three copies of the same plan, but none of us can efficiently get rid of anything. And so we have six copies of of May first twenty twenty plans and then we have one copy of the ones from two thousand nineteen or, you know. So hopefully this is somebody that can help us, that isn't us making those decisions.
Yeah, and there is, he questioned me.
I think that's just my email coming in.
I'm on my phone, I was running late, so Nate's back again.
Hey Nate, are you alone? Give Jen a thumbs up if you're alone.
He said he didn't have audio.
Okay.
What the heck with that? I'm on my phone, I have video but not au- audio, why?
He has video, but he can't hear us or he can't talk? Is that better now?
See now, he's off mute.
Now I can hear you.
Hey Nate.
Hey.
Alright, so we'll get back to you.
So are you alone or with someone?
I'm alone.
Okay.
Alright, have you got anything else?
Um, oh, what was I saying before that? Oh, so there was, he questioned whether they were to pick up the documents and bring them or if we would be bringing them. And I had him quote for them to come pick them up and bring them, because who's gonna do, who's gonna have the time to do that?
And keep them in order of any sort.
Right.
Okay. Alright, anything else on your hot list?
No, I'm done.
So that that quote of seventy whatever hundred dollars was with them actually picking up, bringing them back to where they're gonna process?
Actually, eight four four nine.
Okay, eight four, and then bring them back?
Yep.
Okay, let's uh, maybe we do, maybe we do, we'll figure it out. Alright, um is everybody registered for the planning conference or who's registered for the planning conference? Let's try that one.
Just us two.
Okay. Nobody else?
And that's for both days, right? It's a, yeah.
Uh registration closes on Friday, I believe.
Yep.
I believe that's what I read today, so um I'm gonna, Ray, I'm gonna encourage you to do that to get some of some.
I shouldn't, yeah.
What?
I said I should as well, get on.
I was gonna start with the with the newest and and see if you would set a good example, okay?
Yeah.
Encourage, I think it's nine to one both days?
No.
Or is it all done for, isn't it?
I had, yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
Nine to four thirty.
Day deal.
Yeah, it's.
Bring in chicken sandwich and coke.
All day, yeah.
Is it in-house now or is it still online?
Online.
Yeah, that's it now.
Um, okay, so you got till Friday and um I had a callback that's a master plan consultant that um that the woman that we wanted to use recommended call and so I have her phone number to give her a call back to try and get some estimates and timelines and things like that. So we will hopefully have a whole lot more information at our next meeting. Um.
Oh, so you actually didn't get a quote from her?
No, I got a quote from the woman whose name is alluding me that um everybody liked on PlanLink.
Catalogo, like?
Nope. Um and it's not Carol, she recommended, whatever this person is, she's from like the northwest side of New Hampshire. And she recommended somebody on the east, on the on the seacoast for us. So, and we still have to call, I still have to call Southwest Regional, we've got a couple things to talk with them about, so. Um we also, uh the selectmen have requested that we buff up and finish up the capital improvement plan. And some of the departments, since we were hit or miss with some of the departments last fall, um we are going to relook at at regrounding that and bringing it back to this group. So we're gonna collect some information and by the end of May, the goal is to have a new document that 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 folks will have talked through department-wise. And we can make recommendations then to the select board about how to go forward and try and really stage out money, so that it is for once in all really kind of comprehensive and it isn't that we get two years down the road and suddenly there's ten more things that have to go on the list. So we're gonna try and level out some of that dialogue, anything you wanna add to that?
Oh, that's, yeah, pretty much that, yeah, yeah.
So what's interesting is the the whole nature of master planning and capital improvement, right? So you master plan, then you use that to then decide how you're gonna fund things, the capital improvement plan is supposed to be how you spread it out. So the good news is if we can get the capital improvement plan solid, it's gonna take us a year to a year and a half to do our master plan. We would then roll into that prioritization ba- based on the master plan for the next CIP. So it it should flow fairly nicely if we get everybody into a good routine with it. We have new leaders in like police and things like that, so again, I think we're gonna have, we're not gonna have everybody leave, so we'll have continuity. Like Mike Abel, I would assume is gonna be around for a while, you know, and so as other folks retire and we start to replace, it would be not a a brain drain all at the same time. And we would have continuity of of plan.
Correct, and then the idea behind all of this is to ha- have these things looked at annually instead of, you know, like whenever the next thought process comes up. But during budget season, the select board will actually be looking at the documents every year and uh uh refreshing on it, so.
And it's hard to think about what you need, so the new worksheets that we've done has kind of things like for the fire department. And I'm I'm just using them as an example, because they got bunches of trucks and stuff, right? So what is your, what are your, what are your assets? Here's our assets, truck one, two, three, four. There's a table right below it now that says what maintenance do those things need, new tires, oil changes, I don't know if they need pressure testing, you, whatever, if you tell me, I'll believe whatever you tell me. Um and so whatever needs to be done, if that's in a list, then it'll help the zero-based budgeting that the selectmen like to do.
Much more comprehensive and then it'll be available for all voters to the community to see, they'll understand wha- uh what to look for going uh ten years out.
Sound like.
Having like a brain stuttery day.
Me too.
So our role in that is that to come up with the the questionnaires for the, for each each uh, you know, or basically are we trying to get the information out of them and through the questionnaires?
Get the information and their prioritization, their preferred prioritization, right? So if everybody says, if if um if, for example, the police department says we need X, Y, Z and we need it by twenty twenty-nine. And the fire department says we need X, Y, Z by twenty twenty-five, then we may be able to lay it all out, so that they're not all wanting something in the same year. Or that we can spread the costs out, either we sta- stage the projects or we or we try to build that reserve fund so that it hits at the right time.
Yeah.
Um but both ways, the goal is to kind of level taxes, but also get done what we need to get done. Now, it may be that everybody wants funds in twenty twenty-four, it's not uncommon, we've seen that in past CIPs. I would like this board to get into its right role of then helping the selectmen prioritize.
Yeah.
So that we collect the information, we look at at it from an outside view and say, how do we move the pieces to make the best recommendation to the selectmen, which they can then choose to accept or decline.
Yeah, so establishing a plan, essentially.
Re- a real plan, yeah, and we've never really.
A planning board, yeah.
And it's tough, right, because there's this whole, I don't wanna spend money and everybody wants, it's 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 it's, uh everybody gets a pony, right? And so in between there is where our our truth is gonna live and then how do you make decisions accordingly?
Yeah.
Okay. Um I was giving Sean the example earlier that like for me, the second set of fire gear hasn't been mentioned at all until this year. I shouldn't say it hasn't been mentioned at all, it's probably been mentioned. And but we also had a dryer and both of those are meant to get the fi- firefighters back in, able to be in the field at the same quicker. So would we, if we had looked at those two things at the same time, would we have given them equal weight? Or would we have said which one gets you the most first and then let's stagger the other one out? I don't think we've had those kinda discussions. And and yet we would also probably as part of the 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 process would be if we had had both of those things, if both of those things had come. As myself and Lou have done that, we could have said, well, which of these do you want more if it comes down to it? Which is what you guys do with ARPA, right? You said stage your priorities.
Yeah.
And by making people stage their priorities, it helps them just I want it all, because we we sometimes can't do it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Why wouldn't the owner of the issue be the one that sets the priority?
They can prioritize within their own, but now if if fire has a priority and rec has a priority, somebody has to reconcile, they both have number ones, right? How do those number ones match up is part of where this board, I think, has to put.
Wouldn't public safety, I mean, how do you, how do you weigh in the fact that whatever service is being provided to the community? You know, is that part of the decision criteria, not versus like a want?
I think that's what we have to discuss, right, because one of the things that's come up is um what is, we could say, eh, we could say there's degrees of of safety with a number of things that we talk about. So getting the police new guns or new weapons, probably a good idea if their weapons are are not in great shape. But if they still have a plus or minus of ten years, maybe it's not a safety issue this year, we can put it off another year. Or we look at the value of of the townspeople to say, we want more recreation, but we're doing all more safety. The the rec level, we may wanna start balancing how we how we mix our funds. Think about how we invest, right, how we invest in our future, how do we, how do we invest? Um and I don't, I don't have the answers at all.
Well, that's the value of the master plan too, because then it gives the community a voice, like in that decision process. So we should abide by that as close as we can, right?
Yeah, well, and I think what the town wants, the town could say everybody wants a pony and I think then we should take that under advisement. But it might be that that we don't, the pony isn't the first priority and something else that is falling down might be the priority, you know, I, we don't have the the whole scenario in front of us. So, alright, uh last thing I have is I got a note from Lou that um he has been one of two people that's been the Southwest Regional Planning Board Consultant uh for the town and the other one has been Jim Coffey. Um and Lou asked me to at least look into making a recommendation for who might want to succeed him since he is, isn't really tied into the planning board at all right now. So I don't know if anybody wants to do it and or if you have any feedback on is Jim gonna continue in that role?
I'm not sure how active he is in it now, but and I don't have any feedback from Jim on that.
Um.
Because all we've discussed last night was Lou's role and, you know, we felt that it was best to, you know, put the question to the planning board first before the select board made any decisions of, you you know, switching it up, so.
And I don't know how often they meet, do you? Is it quarterly?
I don't know.
Okay.
If I was to be thinking of something like that, I'd wanna know what kind of time is required.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I already participate with the broadband issue and it takes probably about two hours out of my week. And I could actually give you a report of some of the things that I've, we talked about recently, since it is under planning now. But, you know, it can be an investment that I I think we we as a group should know if we're gonna have, if someone's gonna volunteer to do this, what's the level of effort that's actually required?
Lindsay, Liz is coming on.
Alright, so do you wanna do an up, plan an update for our meeting, uh, May fourth? Will you do an update?
E- for broadband?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
May fourth, yeah.
Um, alright, so that was a. Um, alright, so that was a longer than typical, um, thing. Do you wanna defer and we'll shift, we'll do minutes and then, um, do the Bertram and then we'll do?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so let's knock out, uh, Liz, welcome aboard. Are you solo?
Excuse me?
Are you alone?
Yes, I am alone.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Good to not see you but hear you, cause I don't have my camera up for, for viewing right now, but, um. Alright, so let's look at minutes. We have two sets of minutes to go through. April, uh, March sixteenth. And of course, there's nothing on my computer screen. Doesn't that just figure?
There goes the setup.
Yeah, there goes all the time to set that up. Please hold.
There's two in the drop box. Should we do one the twenty second first?
The twenty second?
You mean the sixteen?
Sixteen?
Sixteen, oh, yeah, you're right, excuse me.
None of the sixteen.
Okay.
Let's think of a different.
This has been a day for everybody, I think.
It has.
It's, yeah, we, uh, something's not aligned with Myers or something.
Please hold.
It's just, right, I'll, I'll modify it. Okay, I was looking at that. Alright.
Okay, here we go. Sorry, guys. I don't usually do this in drop box. Any updates, corrections, et cetera?
Yeah. Opera funds were discussed and what will be needed? Period. Chair Deter will work on list, right?
Okay, so I got good news and bad news. Can you write that down? Because I can't edit the drop box.
Yes, cool, yes.
Thank you. Alright, is there a motion to, uh, adopt as amended?
I'll make that motion, yeah, I'll second it.
Corrected. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent, motion carries. Alright. Now, we're gonna move on to the, uh, April sixth meeting minutes, which I believe are going to be a strain for us to get through.
Yeah, and if you don't approve, then.
Is there a motion to approve as presented?
I'll present that motion.
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, um, we had set a date to come back to it, right?
Yep, we did. We said we were going to come back to it in our May, I'm sorry, our April, no, May fourth meeting.
Now, if you wanna add that.
Is it May fourth that we were gonna do that?
It was our next meeting, right?
It was our next meeting, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Which is May fourth, yep.
Was that gonna be a six o'clock again? Is that what we're shooting for?
If you guys are, are good with that, we'll just pick up where we left off.
Okay.
And we'll talk about that again at the end of the meeting.
At six P M?
Six P M. Alright, all those in favor of the motions as corrected, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you, Nate. Oppose? Abstentions? Thank you, that passes. Alright. So, we are in pretty good shape. Let's review where we left off with that, so we, so we can be done when we're done with, um, the commercial district. Um, our last meeting was, um, it was the CIP, it wasn't the CIP, it was the master plan. Master plan data, master plan, I don't know, let's see if this is. Does everybody still have the handout of who was up next in the queue for speaking and doing their updates? Or do you want me to ask Jen to post it again? Liz?
I think it has up next, but repost is on the table.
Yes, that's right, that's right, okay. So, Jen, will you repost the order that we were going in? Um, is there anybody that wants to, we, we are, we started with the comprehensive overview of the master plan. We then went into some of the, the, the recaps of the individual sections. And then we're gonna look a little deeper at some of the housing, um, items. Is that you?
Uh, we did discuss, I've.
We kinda went through that one, right?
I thought we did.
Yep, alright, that's good.
He did both of his.
That's right, okay. So, we're gonna head over to Sean next. Um, some of the other sections are kinda like that housing section, they're so far out of date that the summaries basically give us what we need. So, I'll take a look and see if there's anything else that we need to pick up base, beyond our original assignments. Is there anybody that wants an additional? Nate, did you do your section? I can't remember.
Nate wasn't here.
No.
Oh, that's right, Nate didn't have a section because he was on vacation.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay.
And you're not gonna be here on the fourth either, are you?
No.
Yeah.
I think it's a plan.
Right.
He has a great mind.
Alright, Nate, um, I'll, at some point in time you and I can catch up and we'll just go through, um, the discussion points. Cause I think next time we'll spend more time discussing about where we wanna head in areas we might wanna look at. And I'll, we'll have more information from the CIP consultant as well, so that'll help us.
Uh, with regard to the housing thing, um, I definitely thought that we should be making some decisions with regard to what direction we want. And we talked about it a lot, but I don't think we, we actually, you know, collectively, you know, threw on our idea of this, this or that.
Right.
And that those would, you know, I mean, in me, to me, and you know, my logical kinda engineering mind, if we don't do that, then where we're gonna be? You know, whether it's on larger buildings or condos or elderly housing or all that kinda stuff. Cause there were a lot of, uh, things flapping around in the breeze that as a planning board, we should maybe sit down, make a decision, think about it, which way we wanna go.
As, sorry, as far as making a decision to, to, to what we, to what, I guess, what's?
Well, for example, um, there was talk about how you deal with, uh, you know, should we have more elderly housing, more affordable housing, things like that? So, if that's gonna be a path we take, you know, we should say, yeah, we, we should have how much, eh, eh, we should have it and have how much of it and where it's gonna be. And, uh, maybe how big it's, you know, just so there's a lot of, um, building blocks we ought to put in place to, um, if we're gonna,
Yeah.
update that to a master plan.
Yeah, I think that would be something that we'd be, that we would be wanting to figure out how to put that in a questionnaire as far as what the town, right, the direction of the town. Um, part of that would be decided by the master plan, right?
Yeah, well, uh, well, I mean, it's gonna be, eh, eh, I would think the decisions are gonna be made and then put into the master plan.
Eventually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think what, what Josh is saying is we're looking at the basics to say, what topics do we even wanna put in front of discussion groups? And then based on how the information comes out of the discussion groups, we would put together a formal survey. So, like, I, to give you an example, um, we talked, I'm trying to think of something that hadn't even come up, maybe, maybe infrastructure and, and broadband. Maybe there was nothing on broadband in the, in the master plan. So, maybe we wanna add a section on technology or local availability of, 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 um, I T infrastructure or what have you. So, our goal is to start just saying where are the holes? And then what topics do we wanna at least put out there for the groups to talk about? Tomorrow, I'm gonna meet with Sean and somebody that, to talk about facilitated discussions, so.
Lauren Somer.
I'm sorry?
Lauren Somer.
Lauren Somer. To talk about facilitated discussions and how do we bring these topics to the public and get some basic feedback that would then inform what we've already started to digest, that maybe we need to set up a mix or maybe we need to set up incentives for builders to build whatever is needed the most or things like that we've started. But these are all just first pass thoughts that were the stage that we're at.
Yep, that's, we'll, we'll say.
Cause, cause that master plan framework is kinda, are wholly guided by the community. And then, like, and we, we create the questionnaire, so that's where filling the blanks comes in. Like to get feedback on certain elements that are missing and then tweaking it.
That's what my question before, and it's not, my question was mainly, we don't, I don't, we don't wanna go too far down the, down a path where we're, where we're making decisions that eventually aren't really our decisions to make. Right, so we can have discussion after discussion about what we think that the town might want. And then you put a questionnaire out there and all of a sudden that's, we're, okay?
Yeah, but in my opinion, if we are putting out a questionnaire, we're in a sense making a decision. Because we're letting people say yes or no about this and yes and no about that. So, just the fact that we're putting certain things out there, we're kind of, uh, yeah, and that's put in the framework for all of them. And with something with regard to housing, I, I mean, you know, I'd have no problem coming up with what my opinions are, but I think we should collectively, um, put in our thought processes for something as critical as housing.
So, uh, are we gonna expand on that in the questionnaire, in terms of the community?
In like the same, as far as a, a, a focused group in a, in a group larger than, than just the planning board might, might help with that as well, you know? That'll narrow it down a little bit and focus it a little better.
And it may also give us some of our bents, right? So, there's a perfectly neutral question you could ask. Do you support additional elderly housing? Very plain old vanilla, and I think that is one of the questions, right?
Okay.
Plain old vanilla question. But then it, then some of the sections that followed, and we're gonna get into this when we meet next week, eh, or, uh, two weeks from now, is there were sections like, do you believe that, um, that elderly housing should be incentivized, might be a question? Okay, or, um, do you believe there should be a balance of, of single family, multi-family? Those questions haven't been asked necessarily to allow us to, to rank, compare things? If you would? Um, and like, there's a couple that it was like, do you believe elderly housing, yes, and then there was another one was like, well, do you think we should incentivize it? Hell no. Or there was all equal across the board, which means we have a really du- really variable mix of opinions in the town. Now, this was years ago, but that's the stuff that I think we need to tease out. And if there's things where I do think we get to have a little bit of a bias, but this board is really nicely variable, I don't know that we'll get it, is if we can all agree on something, that's pretty powerful to say, maybe we should put a, a biased question in to see if we can get agreement from the public on it. You know what I'm saying? But again, we, I think we would have to agree a hundred percent or really close to that if, before we would say, let's put a biased question. And I, we have even, this is where we need the consultant to help us.
Yeah.
We're, 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 I think we have the basic pieces, but we don't have how it all fits together. Okay? Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna repost the, um, repost the order. Uh, the, uh, master plan presentation order. Who's, you're up, uh, you're up first and I think Sean.
John, I should be up there.
And you may be on deck and then John or I is in the hole probably for the batting order when we, when we know.
I was trying to skip them on the last one, it wasn't whack, it wasn't out there, so.
Alright.
It actually turned into quite a conversation.
Yeah, I, I didn't even not, good enough pitch on that one.
Alright, so we are good. Let's, uh, let's go into the Bertram hearing and, hi.
Lita.
Good, I'm gonna try and get to where you are on the camera for our folks that are, um, perfect. Yeah, if you wanna sit right there, it's that way, or I can, might be able to get you up to stand behind, if you would.
No, that's fine.
Alright. So, this is, uh, the public hearing on, help me Jen, cause I can't see anything because I have my camera on. What's the here, the hearing, the lot, lot number for Bertram?
Yep, hold on one minute, please.
Map eight, lot fifteen, V H one.
Thank you. And you're gonna do an update for us, right?
Yes. Um, so, last meeting was, I think, January or February?
It was a while ago.
Right, yeah.
It was, it was a while ago. Uh, still waiting on the wetland permit. There was a snag with that and so I'm still waiting on that. The state subdivision component is pending the wetland crossing approval. Um, Z B A granted a variance for the crossing. And, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the driveway plan has been submitted. But I, that, that I wasn't certain about, cause I missed a meeting, I was sick.
Jen, do you know?
I have no idea.
And I missed a meeting, so I know that it was at least submitted by email, so it, that's.
Sue would have that, um.
I thought I saw something in the drop box that had Peter Gouy's name on it in the driveway, like.
Hold on, I gotta.
I think you actually just went by it, I can go back to it in a minute if you, um, hang on, so here it is, um, the Public Works Department. It's, um, Planning Board, Dean Bertram. After inspecting the proposed driveway, a withered proposed driveway is going, a new lot off of Po- Po- Port Farm Road. I see no issues with the landowner is proposing it and would need a driveway permit when they are ready to construct the proposed driveway. So, that was Peter Gouy's on seventeen August twenty twenty one. And that was seventeen of August.
That was in August, you said?
Seventeen of August twenty twenty one, that, that was in the drop box.
Okay.
I didn't, um, know if that was, uh, I mean, uh, so you're taking this piece of property and you're putting in, you're drawing a line down the middle and making two lots.
Yes.
I, the, the plan that I'm seeing, I'm not seeing a second driveway, I'm only seeing the, uh, plan that I'm looking at only has one driveway on it.
Okay.
Um, so maybe.
That's one of the things that I was wondering, so I'll have to get additional copies, this is.
Sure, it'd be great to look at it with a piece of paper as opposed to small sheet.
This is the, um, I don't know, can, can that, is that visible?
No, we're probably gonna, um.
Isn't it already in the drop box folder?
There is, that, that drawing is in the drop box folder.
Did you send me that?
It should be in there and it would have been sent around November thirtieth. Somewhere between November thirtieth and the first week of December.
The one I'm looking at is, uh, eight eighteen, so that's August eighteenth.
I got it. If, uh, what's, let me check the date on this one.
November, yeah, this is dated November thirtieth. Yes.
And, um, it's called, oh, the driveway design plan, um, oh, so that's just for the, um, that's just one of the lots right there, okay.
Right, because the, the other lot is, there's an existing structure and an existing driveway crossing on it.
Okay. But this says existing, on, on this drawing here that you have, uh, what I'm looking at, it says existing.
Meaning that there is an existing access way.
Oh, not a driveway, it's an existing access.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and that was one of the things that caused, uh, there, there's been a change in the wetland rules at D E S, so uh, because there are existing trails crossing the wetlands, that was an issue that needed to be addressed with, uh, the Wetlands Bureau.
Were they actually crossing the wetlands or were they just getting close to the wetlands?
No, it was actually crossing them.
Crossing?
Yes, there were a couple of trails that, that were preexisting uh, to, to the present owner, uh, going back to when he purchased the land in the eighties.
So, just to bring us up to date, I believe we, um, had determined that the plan was, that, that the application was complete. So, we were discussing the, um, So we were discussing the um, the, the plans themselves now. And um. If I remember right, there were several culverts currently in place.
Right.
And by making this change, they would be making this one bigger and removing one of the other culverts.
That's right.
Just make sure I got it right. And we had asked, and I, I think this might be part of it, was to see how you were gonna navigate kind of the. There was an intermittent wet slope.
Yes.
I mean, steep slope. Um and. Wetlands that kind of patch worked, and so we said, show us how it would kind of look, which is what you did here.
Yes. Would, yes, exactly, and, and as part of that, uh a variance was needed.
Okay, and then the other thing that we had requested was drainage. So does this leave you with any drainage questions?
Um I have a number of questions, you want me to start?
Yes, Nate, would you, um Nate and Liz either raise a hand, so li, uh Jen, can you see them?
I can't see Nate.
Okay, Nate, put up a, under reactions, I think it's under reactions. Um when you hover over the bottom of your screen, I think it's reactions, put a smiley face or a hand up or something if you need to ask a question.
Yeah.
I don't wanna miss anybody.
Whoa.
And are you guys able to hear everything okay?
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay, and if you will help me.
Liz, can you hear?
Make sure that the right things are up on the screen, so that when you're talking about something, Liz and Nate can see it, that would be great.
Okay, um I've got um a different drawing that I was gonna ask my first question about.
Okay, that's fine.
Um. Should I stop now or do you, you wanna keep going with what you, you?
Do you have anything else you wanna update us on, I'm sorry?
No, I think that that covers it with your explanation of kinda the process of how we got here, I think we're good.
Raise new, so I don't know if you had, had a chance to go through these?
Just briefly.
Okay, alright. Go ahead, you're up Lou.
Um alright, so my first question was, um and this has to do with the drawing entitled um. Uh the two lot, uh supplemental plan for a two lot subdivision. Is that identified enough, are you?
Yep.
Um alright, so it struck me that the um four thousand uh square foot reserve here, that's upgrading of the uh building blocks.
Hold on, um where is that in Dropbox, Lou?
Um.
Is it that one supplemental plan two thousand twenty one eight eighteen?
Eight eighteen, yeah.
That, nope. Oh, maybe.
Um.
No, the one below that.
It's the first, the first plan in the Dropbox box, so.
I mean, I'm just, I just opened them up, but I'm going through, you can look over here if you want, but.
But what's the name of the showing on the top?
Oh, um.
Bertram supplemental plan two thousand.
Uh Bertram supplemental plan twenty oh one uh dash oh eight dash eighteen.
Okay, we're good, we're good.
PFD.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one, so I, I was just wondering why you uh put the leach field upgrading of the house?
Um.
Does that mean someone's gonna have to put in a pump and it's a whole more level of complication and power goes out? They're not flushing their toilets, shit, it's the fan.
Maybe, maybe not, I mean, he, he might move it. To the back of the lot, it just means that there's a reserve area that fits on the lot and there's building blocks that fits on the lot.
No, I mean, I got that idea that, that you know, I mean logically, you would think that if you're gonna submit a plan, you would do it in a more logical way than. Sticking the leach field up gradient.
The, the, the um, the reality is, is that the, the house will likely go between where the well is and the reserve area.
Um, okay, well, if you do that, then aren't you gonna be, uh I mean, when I'm looking at that ninety two uh foot, uh ninety two uh. Contour, is that one of your wetland setback lines?
No, uh there's a separate building envelope, I don't know how well you can see it on your screen, there's.
It's just tough to deal with this stuff on the small computer screen like that, so.
I know, I know, the building envelope goes to the west of the, the protective well radius.
Oh, excuse me, okay, I do see this building envelope there, so if I'm looking at the building envelope, so I, I was, I guess I was thinking of the twenty five, uh seventy five by seventy five building block, box.
Like, to be honest Lou, I just put the box in the, in the box.
Okay. Um so the building envelope there, I, I mean, what you're showing is a building envelope um on the drawing I have goes right into the wetland. So I guess that's why I was ignoring that particular uh line there. Um, is that how your drawing shows it, I mean, if you, if you open up that thing?
No, it doesn't go into the wetland, there's a fifty foot setback from the wetland to the building envelope.
It goes into the steep slope. Oh, that, that's the steep slope thing?
Yeah.
You know, I need to have these things on a piece of paper. Um, okay, but anyway, you're, with regard, the, the particular question I had was the leach field being upgraded. And I just didn't think that was a good idea.
No, it likely will not be, but. Uh. It, it likely will not be in reality.
Okay, um the next thing I was wondering about was um. The wetland scientist you had here sharing, um, did she size the culverts for these wetland cross, uh the wetland crossings?
Nah, no, they were spec on the driveway design plan by the engineer.
Okay, so he came up with the, the culvert size?
Yeah, the fifteen inch HDP, yeah.
Okay, um, you know, I don't know, um, I'm gonna guess you're an engineer?
I'm not.
Okay, well, I mean, if you, kind of on the technical side and you think of um. The rains, you know, the fact that we have climate change coming on and a lot of different um heavy rain events, but if you just take an inch of rain. And you spread it out over an acre, it's amazing how much water that is. And um, you know, when you get that much water, it's a question of, well, is this culvert gonna be big enough? And then since we're dealing with wetlands, um we're also dealing with animals and, you know, uh they, so. I'm just thinking that the uh, uh culvert sizes, to me, I think they should have been a lot bigger for a lot different reasons. You know, potentially heavy rainfalls, um turtles and animals be able to move back and forth, things like that. Um, and the other thing is, uh you know, obviously the flatter the culvert is, the less water it's gonna carry. Uh you know, the, the slopes, alright, so if you have a wetland on both sides of what you're crossing. It's not like you can control your slope. Right?
Yeah, I think I'm following you.
Okay, I mean, cause the wetlands where, where it is, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh so it's not like you can say, ah, well, let's put a little more pitch on this thing. That's not gonna work.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, now, yeah, 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 I got you now.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Um which is, what, so um when I looked at a lot of those uh drawings, again, it just didn't strike me that the um. Diameter of the culverts was gonna do it for you.
Well, today, a six inch culvert's working.
In what, but you're not, you know, I mean, in what sense is it working, is six inch culvert working?
It exists today.
Yeah, yeah, but what sense is it working, is that because it, it's allowing water to flow? Because it won't, once you start putting in, uh you know, a leach field in a house and a driveway and, you know, you change the characteristics of what's there?
Ye, again, I can't speak to the technical merits of it, because I'm not an engineer, I don't. I mean, I had classes in college, but I can't speak on a professional level to your question.
Um, alright. So um, yeah, uh that's, you know, to me, the six inch culvert, that was a joke. Uh just because it's there and you say it's working, it's, you know. I wouldn't really think it's working.
Well, it may flood over, it may flood over a couple times a year, you know what I'm saying?
Right. Right, right, and you know, I wouldn't think that's the thing you want after you developing a lot and having a house. Um, so, I mean, that's, to me, that's a difference. Um, okay, so that's what I was, that's why I had to ask you if, if it was sized by uh the wetland scientist or.
Is it, is it designed by a t, a twenty year storm event? What is the calculation, I just wanna relay that to the engineer?
Um, well, I mean, okay, the storm event, I wouldn't, I'm an engineer.
Yep.
Um, I wouldn't even begin to think of sizing something to a twenty year storm, I think that's just ridiculous. And um, I mean, I could show you pictures of cities where there's, in the last twenty years, that had four, five hundred year flood events. It, wherever those numbers came from, they're wrong. I mean, I've seen FEMA maps of a town in Massachusetts, I own a house in, it's probably about.
I respectfully disagree, Lou, I mean, ultimately, the regulations make a statement of what the design standards are, and so I'm just simply asking. What is the regulations state, and I'll relay that to.
I've no idea, I'm not looking at the.
I know it's not a hundred, cause we talked about going to a hundred. Which makes me think that, I, I can't access my computer, cause I'm on, I'm on screen.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, does anybody, do you have the, the um zoning regs?
No, I'm not looking at the zoning regs, I'm just thinking of practicality.
Okay, well, so what I'm wondering is where, I, I don't know where, I, I can't do a search right now to know what our standards are.
Um.
Shouldn't that be for the engineers uh input to us versus us digging through all that?
Exactly, that's what I would think, you know, I would think would have, have that kinda thing.
I know we're not at a hundred, cause we just talked about going to a hundred.
I did, did pass the, through our ZBA right now, right? You did say that it didn't, so essentially, wouldn't that be the number one thing that the ZBA would look at?
Uh well, zoning, isn't zoning if like, you know, putting a commercial thing in a residential area, isn't that zoning?
They're judicial.
I think zoning had, had to do with waterfall.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe, yeah.
Um.
Uh Liz, you're on, do you know the answer to that?
Has anybody got the uh appendix B of the um, of the subdivision regulations?
I will look for it. I mean, you guys are gonna.
Open ditches shall be designed for over ten year design storms. When velocities exceed five fifty seconds, though, I'm not an engineer, in the ditch for ten year design storms, the ditch should be stone lined. Treatment swell velocities should not exceed. Um one foot per second for two year storms, the tension pond design shall use twenty five year design and provide a minimum one foot freeboard for fifty year storm. Not sure that covers what we're talking about.
And what appendices was that, Liz?
Appendix B.
Okay.
Uh in, on drainage. Um.
My computer's just giving me blanks today.
Um.
You got it in your, you got it in your stuff, Josh?
I don't have it right here, me.
I can go to the town website, that's where I can pick it up, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'll do.
Um. Might be.
Okay, so we're looking under.
Subdivision regs, you can move it.
Regulations.
Regulation, thank you, Jen, takes a village. Appendix B?
I think. You're looking at drainage or?
Culvers, drainage.
Um.
There we go, alright, so we are under. Um. And we're looking for years, years would be our keyword?
Well, yeah, and I, um.
It's twenty eight.
In, in appendix B under. Um blah blah blah. Nope, it's appendix B. It's appendix B um oh five for drainage.
Got it, got it.
Exactly what we're. Talking about.
Well, as you're looking at those appendices and you're thinking about this stuff, I'm just gonna toss out another. One inch of rain, which is a pretty small rain event, like last, yesterday, we had a one inch rain. Called my gauge, that's a hundred and thirty six cubic yards of water over an acre. Hundred and thirty six cubic yards, just think how much that water, how much water is there? And then this property is also down gradient, if you look at that wetland section, it's, you know, we're catching water on this property from uh. The property above it, uh what's that, lot fifteen? So it just strikes me that we should be paying a lot of attention to culvert size, especially given the number of crossings here and the.
It is only one crossing right now, not, I'm not trying to downplay that, but it is one crossing now, right, we're limiting it to.
Well, I'm just, I mean, one of these drawings has a couple of crossings, just kind of in the area where the driveway is coming up, so. I guess what I'm saying crossings where, you know, it's identified as a wetland, a pinch point, another wetland, a pinch point, another wetland. Like that, and then, and then all, and then all a lot of this water is getting dumped onto the um lot that originally has, that has the original house on it. So.
Which direction does the water go, towards the original house or away from the original house?
Away, so it goes south, so it goes to, towards the original.
Okay.
Right.
And that driveway also has a fifteen inch culvert.
So, I know you s, you talked about the fact that there were, there, you were going from a six inch to a fifteen inch. And then you were removing other culverts to remove the pinch points from the other?
Right, so there were two six inch culverts, and then both of those will be removed and one will be replaced.
So the velocity is gonna go up quite a bit.
Um, you know, there's a lot more to it than that, I think, there's um, you know, um, uh do these, are these wetlands actually gonna hold water for a while? Uh versus, are they just gonna totally shed water?
Yeah.
Um, things like that, um. And um, you know, uh the answers that you'd only have by looking at a topo map are actually going out there after rain. I'm just, just looking at the drawings, I'm just paying attention to what the culvert size is, where the water's coming from, how much water can potentially be there? Um, those kinds of things, because, you know, I think to me, when you're asking to lay out a new lot. We should be thinking of who's gonna just waltz in and potentially buy this. And are we going to set the person up for a problem?
So do we need to go look now and do a site visit of how much water is sitting there?
Um, that's something that we could do, but again, I would have thought that engineers would have thought this out now. Again, you know, you go and you hire an engineer, of course, they're gonna do what you want them to do. Um, you know, it's not like we're building a bridge, you're not, you put too many people on that bridge and it collapses. It's not, there isn't gonna be a situation to collapse, it's just gonna be a situation of having issues that you're gonna have to deal with some way or another. And I don't really like fifteen inch culverts, to me, that's really too small. And the reason why I would say that, and I know we put that in our driveway regulations, and I know why you call it there, but I'll just, again, you just do the math. Of how much water can flow and ask yourself, how many people maintain their culverts? And the cost of maintaining a culvert is really high, and you need a lot of specialty.
From a public standpoint, I'm saying.
From a personal standpoint, so if you have a culvert underneath, say, where your driveway goes out on the road and you need to maintain that. You ha, you're gonna deal with, you need, gonna need specialty equipment. And the cost of even bringing in equipment and doing one maintenance issue, if it were getting clogged. Would be way more expensive than a larger size culvert. Now, especially if you're at a driveway point of view where the driveway is entering the roadway. If you have a culvert clogged, that's gonna make the soil under the roadway a lot wetter and is gonna degrade the quality of the town road. So, bigger culvert's gonna work better.
So bigger eighteen, bigger twenty plus, bigger.
Well, do you remember when, remember we had twelve in our driveway, we went up to eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so the math there is that when you went from twelve to eighteen, you got two and a half times the flow. Potential, now, that relates, not that you're gonna need to necessarily carry two and a half times. But that means the thing is gonna be able to wash itself out better, clean it itself out better, a stick isn't gonna, you know, it's gonna take a whole lot more to clog it up. That kinda thing.
We even walked the site, I think it's certainly worth walking the site, because if the, if it goes down and comes back up, putting an eighteen inch in there? Or a fifteen inch, I'm not sure there's enough difference there, that, that the applicant would, might not say that's, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and, and again, a lot of this is gonna have to do with the slope that you can potentially do it, cause if you have a wetland on each side of you.
It's designed at three and a half percent, twenty eight.
Three and a half percent. Three and a half percent slope through the uh the pipe?
Yes, at twenty eight feet of length.
Okay, but it was, so does that, I mean, without, again, I, without looking, I mean, by these contour intervals on my. My uh computer, I can't quite identify it, so what you're saying is the three and a half, like this. Wetland into which the water is flowing is three and a half percent lower in grade than the wetland from which it's coming?
Right, so there's a foot of drop.
Okay.
From. And go to outflow.
Alright, alright, so that makes a difference, if you, you know, if it's at down at the inverted pipe. Uh because obviously, when you, you know, if you set this pipe in, you're gonna wanna uh well uh. Stone up any area so that you're not gonna allow a lot of, uh, so you're gonna get some settlement outside. Of your culvert where you can easily maintain it versus um messing up your culvert, clogging up the culvert, right.
And culvert itself. Um. Did you, would you mind going back up to uh?
I think it's B.
Oh, no, there it is, it's uh. F. Well, I guess it's, it's not defining culverts, uh but there is, I just noticed that there's. A design for a ten year standard, twenty five year.
Liz.
Yeah.
Since you seem to have so much more historical knowledge about all of this than I do. Um, would you tell me why we're using a ten year design in our regulations?
I think because we haven't updated, we, you know, one of the uh things that we keep putting off is stormwater control.
Yeah, we've we've talked about going to a hundred, but we just haven't gotten there yet, yeah.
You know.
Hmm.
We we, we haven't gotten to that, I think it's an important item to be dealing with, but the board has not prioritized it, we did it one week.
Hmm.
Uh, so, um, but I my, I guess my question would be, has Kent Brown reviewed this? And um, what is his response to your concerns, Lou?
I think Kent has only um looked at the original plans, which didn't have this detail. That we're, that we're looking at today, I don't know that we've sent him this additional set of plans.
Well, he, I think he's cer- certainly be reviewing this additional set of plans and he's the, you know, he's the one that's knowledgeable.
Okay.
You know, I, I, you know, I wonder if a, if a site visit is actually helpful if we're not. Um, professionals on this and whether it it wouldn't make sense to get Kent involved.
I think it will help us to see if the water is pooling, s- like seasonal, s- seasonal. Um, pooling, ponding, whatever you wanna call it.
Right.
And if it's crossing the current six inch culvert, right now is not a bad time to go look. It's not in the middle of a storm, but it certainly is, the water table is is pretty good right now.
Right. Right.
Yeah, Sean.
So you, are you saying that Kent has not reviewed um the driveway design plan of a.
This. I believe that the plan that we were looking at before we put up the regulations was what was proposed to the zoning board, we did not have it original.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Well, well Kent should definitely review that.
Okay, well, and I wanted, I also wanted to make sure that we, the last time we met, we said that our goal was to see a plan that showed. Where it would actually cross and erosion drainage.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this plan technically fully meets all of those, both of those things, or it just shows the driveway. Not necessarily drainage, one of the things that we're seeing uh in a couple of spots across town is that. We're not accounting for all of the water flow, and so. One of the things I'd like Kent to comment on is what happens if, if the, if the banks of the surrounding areas are are denuded of trees? Because I I think that could make, we've seen a couple of places where denuding of trees has led to some things that. Don't appear to have been accounted for in plans, and so. I'm trying to figure out, like in the, in the um Cravens plans and the Green Farm plans, it actually said how much of the, of the, of the. Growth on the banks could, or around the perimeter of the property could be a- adjusted in any given time. And I think that was part of what they were, what they were getting at, because there was some significant wet spots on that land. So we may, you know, one of the things I'm trying to figure out and and drainage wise is, when we ask. Kent to look at this, do we look at just the dis- disturbance of of the crossing itself and leaving all of the other? Um, items in place, like all of the, help me put that, the green stuff?
The vegetation.
Thank you. Um, do we, we're all having word finding problems today, do we ask him to look at, consider this with everything vegetated? And then we set that as kind of the, the path, is that the intent? And I know we can't speak to the overall intent, but if something's gonna change and that property's gonna be totally denuded of trees, then. That's gonna change the drainage that we're gonna ask Kent to consider.
And then there's the driveway aspect, that's gonna change that, whether it's sealed or not sealed, and then um, there's a whole bunch of other things, and so basically.
Right, right.
You know, what we have here is an existing house, but they own the property above it, but then when they pull the spot line off. And they don't own that property, then what we're gonna be doing is saying a whole lot of that water from that upper lot is gonna be flowing down onto the second lot. We all know that houses last longer than people, so somebody eventually is gonna be buying, uh, uh, taking over this second lot and, you know, they're gonna be. You know, potentially in a place where they get a lot of money.
Majority of the development will blow away from.
Yeah, that's what I've, I grew up there, and if I'm, if I'm remembering it right, the, the existing property that's there. Where they're proposing the new driveway comes down into a, a pretty good valley and then comes back up like, and uh, that was our first.
So in other words, we're gonna get water from both sides coming in here.
Well, right now, this driveway comes in and it kind of rolls up to the house over here. And then this one, the way, the way the contour of the land is right now, it comes down pretty hard off the road and comes back up. So our first, when we first saw the plan.
But once it comes back up, it's gonna go back down.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you were saying originally with the building box and the reserve area.
Yeah, and tha- and that was our first problem with the first plan was we didn't have the ex- the, the layout of the new driveway. And seeing how it was gonna maneuver through that, through that valley. Um, now that we have, now that you have a lot of contour lines, you might be able to, Kent might be able to see it and go, okay. This is, this might be a problem, like, uh, you know, it could be good, um. But that was our first issues with it, with, without seeing where with the proposed driveway, how you're gonna maneuver that, that.
Yeah.
You know, first valley there. And and so I think even with this new plan, Kent would have a lot more information to go off of to to see.
Okay.
Hey, that's, you know, you might have erosion control, you know, issues that you need to address, you know.
So I guess the question is, do you feel there's enough detail in the plans that are before, that we have now? That that are there, do we have the information that, that Kent's gonna need to make an assessment, so we only have to send one set of plans? Or do you have any other additional revisions that you wanna do based on this conversation and then we'll send them to Kent?
Um. It's a loaded question because uh two things, one, if any changes take place, then they also have to take take place with this, with the state well and the bureau. And potentially with the ZBA.
Right.
Uh, so that's.
So you wanted, uh, we can take this set and send them to Kent.
That's challenging and. And then, and so I don't really know how to answer that question, but.
Okay.
Kirk explained to me uh his opinion of the sediment erosion control. And. I forget precisely what he said, but he felt that he addressed it.
Okay.
With the plan that was presented, uh, one of the things.
I'm coming at you Liz, hang tight, as soon as he's done, I'll, I'll get you, he's looking for something.
He had a note somewhere related to. Yes, uh, note thirteen, silt bench showings, to be installed prior to the start of construction in the locations shown on the plan. So as to, and then afterwards, everything's to be seeded and loaned. To be loaned and seeded all the disturbed areas and stone check dams if required should be installed in the ditch along the upper side of the driveway.
Oh, hold on, I'm in the wrong plan, sorry, Liz, on the original supplemental plan, note thirteen, for those of you following at home, Nate, that's you as well.
On the driveway plan.
On the driveway plan, um. Liz, what do you got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and pull up plans while you're, while you're addressing what your thoughts are.
No, I, I was just, um, I'm trying to, you know, the driveway plan doesn't um make it easy to see where the steep slopes are. And um.
Right.
It looks like, um, I mean, you know, and I can't see the, the um. You know, the lines, the contour lines very well on that plan, but. But on the, on the plan that we have that shows the wetlands and the steep slopes, it looks like the driveway is gonna be cutting off an area that's. And I know it's a narrow area, but it looks like it's, it goes over slope that's twenty, over twenty five percent.
So the ZBA's opinion on that Liz is that the intent of that regulation, in fact, they threw out one of the, um. They omitted one of the variance requests related to steep slopes. And their, their uh opinion about what that regulation, the intent behind that regulation is. That it's to prevent development on continuous slopes. Meaning that if if the entire lot sloped front to back, you know, up or down, that that was the intent, so.
Right, we.
So they didn't even hear the variance request for the steep slope.
Well, I, it doesn't, it doesn't technically meet the um definition of steep slopes. Uh, because it has to be over a certain distance. And I think this is quite narrow, but it's, but but the fact that it's, you know, cutting through a very steep area. Says to me, then, okay, then somehow we've got erosion and and um drainage issues. Um, it could be, you know, you know, I don't know what that, you know, that looks like a hump.
Yeah, well, it's a ten and a, so the finished grade will be ten and a half, if you look at the driveway profile.
Yeah.
The, the descent is ten and a half percent, the ascent back up to where the house will be constructed is nine and a half percent.
Yeah.
And and so then it would no longer be a steep slope, but uh to your point, the 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 side slopes will be three to one.
Right, yeah.
In areas outside of the wetlands, inside the wetlands, there'll be two to one to minimize the impacts of the wetlands in accordance with DES regulations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll tell you right now, from experience in my own driveway, at ten and a half percent and a nine and a half percent, you're gonna get a lot of washout. And if you put, decide to put asphalt on it, then you're really gonna have a surge of water coming through.
Sean, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, so it's just a general question of if this plan meets our regulations as written today. Shouldn't that be what we're considering?
I.
And then also with the wetlands um concerns, also the state regulation, they're looking at this as well.
Yeah.
And we've deferred to the state on other projects, um, cause if they approve it. Then, you know, they've, you know, assessed the situation and deemed that is.
And I think they assess the crossing.
Yeah.
Itself, not the plans as a whole, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I think that's incorrect.
I, I, that's correct.
I, I think that they, they also look at the design calculation.
So I've, uh, Liz is saying correct, we're hearing from the applicant incorrect, so we're, we're, I think this is where Kent's gonna be able to help us out.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I just would like to try to keep out our own personal opinions on things, but by by our regulations.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is where I think the conversation should be.
And I, we don't have anything specifically on culverts is I think part of the challenge, and we go only from, we're, we're from ten to twenty five years.
Right, um, I think the, the issue for me is.
And if we don't have that now, then we can't, you know, impose, yeah, you know, additional burden on.
For culvert.
Yeah.
For culvert, yeah, I think for erosion and drainage, we might be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, I think that's the issue, um, for me is the, the, you know, the potential erosion and and drainage. Um, and that we have, um, you know, that, that we have a fair amount of leeway on, um, and uh.
So.
I think that again is is Kent's, um.
So I think we're, we're starting to spin a little bit, so how about if we, we, we haven't heard, you haven't heard back from the state yet? We can get these plans to Kent, um, they have what we requested, but we, we didn't know if there would be additional revisions, so. Let's get these off to Kent, we can do that tomorrow.
Yes.
Can I toss out my last item?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Um, okay, so um, when I'm looking at the drawing, um, I know we have our driveway regulation as a structure, driveway as a structure. Has to be twenty feet from the line, good.
No, go ahead, sorry.
Um, so when I'm looking at this asphalt driveway on the existing property. And I'm looking at the um, uh, line that's drawn, proposed to be uh dividing these, this one piece of property up into two lots. I'm looking at a twenty foot uh. Measurement there, and so I'm guessing that that driveway is actually less than twenty feet from the property line, I'm wondering why. The property line got chosen to be where it is.
There used to be a lot line there, so I was more or less recreating the existing line.
Well, hang on, I thought this was one property to begin with and now we're dividing it into two.
It was initially one property divided into two, it was annexed, merged, and now it's being divided again.
Okay, so does that mean that the driveway gets to violate that twenty foot rule?
It does not, no, 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 that's an oversight.
Okay, alright, so I'm just think, I mean, I can appreciate what you're saying if it went from two to one to two.
No, that's, that's, that's how, that's, that's why that rebar is there, that three quarter inch rebar.
Uh, two to one and proposed to two. As, as the original, as, as what was originally the two lots.
And that's why this. Yeah, yeah.
Right, but now that, um, but now that you're choosing, now that it went to one lot. And you're breaking it back into two lots, we do have a requirement that a driveway has to be twenty feet from property line. And the way this is shown is it's less than twenty feet. Alright, I think that's how it's, it's shown, I mean, again.
Like it is.
It's uh.
I think you're right.
Um, are you right here?
Yeah, no, you're right, yeah, it looks more like center of driveway.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, so um, maybe you need to tease that lot line a little bit to the north there a bit.
Yeah. Can, I can, I'd have to get a variance.
Why would you need a variance?
Because I would then violate the two hundred foot frontage requirement.
Cause they are at two hundred and point nine nine.
And two hundred point, two three?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. How many feet? What is the setback, I, I can't tell from.
It's, it's about ten as it exists.
About ten, I thought, I thought I saw a line on the, on the redland steep slope map that showed a twenty feet, right?
Oh, he's talking about the existing driveway.
In here Liz, I think.
That's for the lower portion of the lot Liz, where this, it's, it's detailed as an asphalt driveway.
Yeah.
And that's the driveway that's existing, so, so they're pulling in a, a line, but they're putting the line. Um, like you said, he, he configured the line to be for the two hundred foot of frontage, but then. That means the driveway is within, is less than twenty feet from the property line.
Right. Yeah, I can, yes, I can see that.
Yeah, and then we had that twenty foot requirement for setback.
Yep. So you, you can't have both twenty fi- foot setback and two hundred feet of frontage.
Right.
Correct.
Um. Um.
Wow.
So, what, we, in theory, you would need a variance for one or the other.
Yes.
Do it one way or the other.
Does the board have a preference either way? Do you know Liz, what is the uh function of that twenty foot separation, do you, do you know what the purpose of that is? It's a rare ordinance in the surrounding towns, that's why I ask.
What do other towns have?
Zero.
Hmm.
There isn't, there isn't a setback for driveways in most towns.
Oh, no.
Well, they're not considered, they may not be considered structures, but that doesn't mean there isn't a side setback on lots.
Well, there's side setbacks, but they're, the driveway proper is not listed as a structure. So most towns, I, I, I assume it's so that driveways don't get constructed over the lot line, but I, I don't know, I'm just spitballing.
Well, I, I would also, you know, I don't, I don't know for certain either, I, um, I guess my assumption has been, you know, drainage and that sort of thing, it helps protect you, and then you can't drain water from your property onto somebody else's property. Um, that's illegal.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
So I'm assuming it gives some leeway for that sort of thing. Um, and, and plus, you know, annoyance like headlights and shining onto other people's property and, you know, I, just seems like it's a margin of error, keeping a, you know, good fences make good neighbors, good setbacks make good neighbors. But I'm just talking off the top of my head right now.
Anything else we need to tackle tonight? We were running behind our, on, on our plan, we know we have to get things to Kent, and.
Well, how, how do you wanna handle, how does the board wanna handle the, this little glitch?
We take it to Kent?
Well, no, I think this is where the.
This is just us.
I, I don't think it's our, I don't think it's our decision, we certainly, um.
Well, I mean the, I mean the twenty-foot setback versus the two-hundred-foot frontage.
Isn't that a zoning issue versus a planning board issue?
I don't think we can, what can we waive, Liz? I don't think we can waive any of the other of those, can we?
We can't.
Right, so I think it, it's really not our choice anymore, it's, it's.
Right, so if you can't approve something that doesn't comply. So, so.
We're back to what Sean said.
That, that's gotta be resolved.
Well, and the question becomes, I, I, I guess the, the question before us is if the, there's going to be a, a variance applied for, is the twenty-foot of good neighbor better than the two-hundred feet of frontage?
I would say, I would say it is, yeah.
Do we, do we care? And, and that's why I'm, why I'm asking the question, cause o- otherwise it's not ours to ask.
Right.
And I think it, we could argue either side, but if we can argue one more than the other, let's tell the applicant so he can say, the planning board prefers this, that's why we picked this way, you know, we.
Well, from a technical aspect, the fact that it's an asphalt driveway means we're gonna get a faster rate of runoff. And the, uh, amount of buffer zone you have of, uh, natural vegetation is gonna do a lot to slow that water down, filter that water out, and a lot, filter out sediment and the like. So to me, the, in my opinion, I would say a twenty-foot buffer zone of natural vegetation would be worth more than a couple extra feet, lot plus or minus on a lot, on a frontage.
That's what my unskilled engine, unskilled engineering thought would be, but I didn't know for sure.
Yeah. I, I think that makes sense to me.
Except for in this case, it's a moot point since there's an embankment there, all the runoff is gonna go, it's gonna stay on its own lot.
The embankment runs along this a hundred and forty-one foot line of bearing?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, there's a, yes, there's a cut.
Well, it's two to three foot.
Two to three foot cut, there.
Okay.
Well, that's helpful, uh, I'll let my client know and see which he prefers.
Okay, that works.
And then, uh, we'll get the plan sent to Kent Brown, the driveway design plan sent to Kent Brown
Mm-hmm.
to, uh, field his comments. And then just await.
And, and I don't, I don't know if Lou wants to send specific questions to Kent or not.
Um, you know, I would say let Kent do what he supposedly does best, I, you know, I was just, um, I, I was just throwing out some aspects of, that I thought would be important, given that if this thing is approved, we're potentially setting some people up in the future for issues that they're gonna have to, um, contend with as good neighbors, and there's no reason to think that future neighbors are gonna be good to one another. Um, so that, that's the only light I was looking at this from.
So, um, when is our date certain to return? The eighteenth of May, question mark? Do we have anything else going on?
No.
Um, is, i- i- if the applicant's gonna need a variance, that's probably not enough time.
Okay.
Last year, so it'll be the end of May. How much time is required, Liz?
They need.
Minimum of fourteen days before their next hearing?
So.
Except they accept the application at one meeting and they don't act on it until the next meeting. So it's really a month if, if they get you on the schedule, on the schedule.
And they need.
I hate to, well, cause it seems like a, you know, a really trivial, um, um, issue, but, at the same time, we can't, we can't waive these things.
So they meet the first Thursday of the month, ZPA?
Um, don't they?
I think it's the first Thursday, which would be two weeks from tomorrow. I don't know if you can get your variance together that good, cause then they could hear in May and decide it in June. So, okay, I'll, I'll leave that to you guys, um, I think the soonest we could hear this then would be June fifteenth? Question mark?
Sounds good.
You wanna pick that day and, and then we can always, you can always adjust accordingly?
Sure.
Okay, so just from a public notice perspective, we're looking at June fifteenth, Jen, you got that?
I do.
That, that hearing will hear that, hear the, will come back to hear this, and hopefully by then the state will have made, made their decision as well, so, okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it, and anything else before we move on?
So I'm just sending driveway, not supplemental plan.
Right, he already has the.
Oh, he does, I know.
He was part of the original packet.
So just driveway, excellent. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, Josh?
Commercial.
Commercial. Does there anything you want me to put up on the screen?
I, I guess, sure, I, I did send an email with, with this, I guess, uh.
Yeah, I put it on the Dropbox.
Did you put it on the Dropbox? Yeah, I sent it today to both you and me.
I can't open it.
Nah, so it's the same, it, this is, I guess you could send it, send those down.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right, did I not, I got a short, you guys one?
Jen, can you quickly shoot that up to Liz and Nate?
Yeah, one more.
Shoot what up? The email that, that, um, Josh sent us?
I had, uh, I kinda shifted gears a little bit on it, uh, when we first started doing it, we were talking, I was talking about getting ahold of the, of, you know, more real estate agents, and, but then with, with, uh, conversation here, it seemed like we, we kinda went around in the circle as far as what our current zoning regulations were, how, what, you know, obviously getting input from a, from a real estate agent doesn't really, how that benefits us at this point, I don't know, cause we, it all will tie into the master plan once we're at that point. Um, so I figured I'd start off with these, um, in a sheet here, obviously write up whatever you want on it, and I can, I can even take it back as far as any ideas, what, if we wanted to change cer- or, or if we were looking to, to potentially look at each, each district, depending on it's, uh, the, the village district, one, two, and rural, what, what is allowed, what is not allowed, you know, but essentially what we allow in them, and then what's allowed through exemptions. If that's, if that's something, right now we cover pretty much everything as far as what the commercial, there are some things with the commercial industrial that, that will go further, but looking at what they, what we allow in each one of these districts, you, we have a little bit, an idea of what, what, uh, if we were gonna make a commercial district, is it even, you know, are we covering it right now? And so, right now with the, with the village district, it's pretty, it's, it's fairly tight as far as what you can, what you can allow in. I thought, I had, Jen had helped me get a, a, or she actually did all, all the, the research for the businesses in town, I was trying to find, and this goes back to what you, what you were talking about, trying to get information in one spot and how fast you can do it, trying to find, how many businesses are in new up searches, not very easy. You, you look at how many, how many commercial properties are actually in new up search as opposed to, you know, what's listed, you know, what's, what's listed as commercial, it's pretty tricky. And so, that, that like, I want, I wanted to try to get a, a list together of what we have in town, how spread out it is throughout our districts, what it looks like on the map, which I wanna get a, a map like this so I can actually write it all out on it and, and be able to, to be able to map it out, cause I guess if you have the, the, uh.
Town map.
Yeah, so it's the, the land use map.
Yeah.
Gives us a good idea on what, how the commercial businesses are spread out, but it doesn't show everything, it doesn't show all of the commercial dis- or, commercial businesses, so having, having it all listed out so we know really through the, how, in the, in the village district one, how many ins are in that district right now, how many, how many businesses do we actually have in the village district? And, and really how they, how do they lay out through the, through the district? Is this something that we're, that we're really, is it a problem right now, is it, is there actually a lot of commercial development happening in these areas, where, where are we focusing right now? How many, uh, how many, uh, applications are going to the, to the zoning board for new commercial properties, and what's that, where do they, where do they land in the town? And so, if you go through, if we go through the, the village district, it's primarily, uh, dwellings, place of worship, uh, town communications facilities, minimal impact home occupations, obviously home, home business, working from home, um, but very limited on what's allowed right out of the gate. Some special exemptions are allowed, again, fairly tight tones on what we allow in that. Now, if we go to further down on the rural district, then you, then you end up allowing a lot of what we would, what we would think is a more commercial art, you know, agricultural, and that's through, primarily through exemptions. And I, and I listed it out, it's a, it's a, not a full, these are key points on it, so it's not a full thing, it's a little bit quicker, but, but, uh, this way we at least have a, a, or, I felt like I, I didn't have a good baseline on what we actually allow right now. And so we were kinda, felt like we're going in circles a little bit more as far as, you know, what we were looking from a commercial district. Now, that, looking at this, you'd say, what is, if, if we go to a commercial district, what, what do we want to allow, you know, that is, that is not exempt, you know, not through an exemption, but just strictly this is, this is the business that we want in this commercial district.
You call that allowed as a right.
Yep, yep.
That's the term now that you use.
Okay.
Allowed as a right. As a right, so you automatically get to do that if it's listed.
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, and so that's what, okay, that's good, good to know. Um, now, I think that was one of the problems that we were having was what is, what is that? What, what are we all thinking that that actually is? And that, that's why I wanted to map out what it, what we have in town right now, because then we can see how, how things are spread out through town right now. I know like, there's a lot of residential, uh, properties on one-twenty-four. If we decide to, if you decided, okay, we're gonna change one-twenty-four to, to commercial, what is that, what does that look like for the residential, you know, lots on one-twenty-four right now? Is that even something that we're, that, that the town is having a, are the people really striving to get onto one-twenty-four, is that, is that something that's, that's, uh, needed right now on one-twenty, you know, are we, how, they seem to be, through the land use map, it seems to be pretty well spread out through town, but fairly minimal impact, and I, and I think that's, I think that's a, one of the things with the town is, uh, from research would be, everything wants to be minimal, you know, nobody wants any major commercial in their backyard or outside of, you know, really in town, we wanna see the benefit, but really we'd like to see low income, impact. Um, the other, one of the other things that I had gone was the spot zoning, I was looking into that. The, one of the, this website here, if you look under that website, it, it has a, a good article on, on spot zoning as far as, it's not really as, as hard to, hard to do as it sounds, you know, it's illegal to spot zone if it's directly benefiting somebody, you know, where, where there's a, where's a direct beneficiary of that spot zoning. If it, if it falls, falls in line with the, the needs of the town, there's, it, the, isn't necessarily spot zoning, you can, you can, you can zone an area for a specific need if the town needs that, what you're, what you're trying for there, so.
So long as it's not one company or.
Yeah, so that, so I guess my, my thing was, is that, and my, one of my questions on it was, can we take the, the town-owned land next to the recycling center and actually take that property or a portion of the property, obviously some of it's a, a, uh, you know, the landfill, the cap landfill, so you can't do building on that, but there's quite a bit of acreage around it. The town owns it now, would that be able to be moved to a specific commercial if we, if we were to, if we were able to identify what the town needs are and say, okay, this is what we are gonna allow in this, in this one property, you know, and it's, and it would technically be spot zoning in a, in a sense that, that it's a one location, but at the same time, it is town-owned land and it is a need for the town, so it's not a direct beneficiary of really anybody. And that would be something to, looking at it, it was always like, ah, you can't spot zone, and, but, what, that's, it's a little bit of a, it's, that's the, a reaction, it's usually, you know, initial reaction is no, no spot zoning, don't do it. And, uh, but that, that, uh, with, or that, uh, link right there will, will get you, it's a pretty, it's a short article, it's, it's a, yeah, it's.
So the link is, uh, library zoning documents, spot zoning?
Yeah, yep, yep.
And actually, I'm thinking that, again, we're implying that there's one or, one or two or a, a small number of beneficiaries, right?
Yeah.
If, if we have a hundred and thirty-eight acres, whatever I just read.
Yeah, yep.
And, and fifty acres is, is the dump, we could do several ten-acre parcels or five-acre parcels and not sell it as one bulk.
Yeah, not, and that's, yeah.
Or not, or not, or, or declare the whole region, but also we could set it up so that there couldn't be one beneficiary.
Yeah.
There's probably a lot of wetland in that hundred and forty.
I'm, I'm, I'm capitalizing, but whatever, whatever the number is,
Yeah.
Okay.
we take that number and we break it up so that it, there can't be one, there can't be designated winners.
And that, and that's where it goes back to, starting with the master plan and figuring out through the master plan what, what the town wants, what the town needs. You know, you, we, uh, a elderly housing is usually a, 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 a good thing for the town in the fact it's low impact. So you have, you have very minimal amount of, of, uh, of infrastructure that's needed for it. You, you start doing certain, certain commercial businesses need more infrastructure where they say elderly housing, there's certain, certain groups of businesses that, that are lower impact and which, which is easier to get into, you know, you, you take a, a A B C style building like that where, where it's rental properties, it's not a, there's not a massive amount that the town needs to invest in getting that property into town and, and up and running. Um, so, there are a few, a few benefits and, and something to, something through the master plan to try to figure out what we want, if it's, this would be trying to kinda leading people, but what do you, what do you, if it's low impact, it's, it's, uh, less tax money away from the town to, to reinforce the town to be actually able to actually have this business in, and then we can actually, we can have this commercial property available. That's, I think that's one of the balances to try to, try to see.
I thought we, didn't we have definitions for commercial, light, industrial, commercial? I thought we, didn't we have definitions for commercial light industrial, commercial?
We do, yep.
Okay.
And, and a lot of that, a lot of the commercial light industrial, so it uh. It goes a little bit more in depth than the, than the rural, but a lot of the rural covers through exemptions covers. A lot of the, a lot of the commercial light industrial, so you, so it just, it's. It's almost, you can, you can get more out of the commercial, it's more specific in the commercial and that's, that would be something that we would, that. We'd have to find out what, how to nail down what is exactly on the commercial list. And uh, but right now, we have a, a large portion of that through exemptions in the rural district. And so that's, it, there's overlap between it, but now, right now in our, in our current, our current system. Any of those businesses that wanna come in, they, they have to be allowed in through their, through the neighborhood that they're trying to get into, you know, you, you. And I, and I was meaning to reach out to the zoning board and see what, what their actual process, and that's something that I wanna do. Is what, what is there, how many, how many applications are there for, for? Uh potential businesses in the rural district? How many, what is the process, what, how do they? How long does it take for a business to get the exemption, what is, how many, what's the process to it? And I know that you have to, the abutters have to agree on it, what is the, what is the rate of acceptance on that? You know, do we, do we, are we accepting eighty percent of the, these applications, are there? How many, how many times do people get denied by their abutters for these businesses? And that, I think that would give us a little bit of an idea on how, how efficient the, the process is right now. Are we, if your neighbors, your good neighbors are, you, you want to have good neighbors and. In this, in this system, you, it all relies on being good neighbors. Um, but that's, that would, that's only to, to kinda see what we, what we have on our, our current system. And, and I think, and I, I could be wrong, but I think that was, that was part of our, our original discussions where. Like you had, you had questions on having a commercial property come into your backyard. You are part of the, you're a part of the village district, I believe on the, in one of the village district ones. And that means there's, there's only a certain amount that's allowed and even, it's a fairly small amount of business that's allowed in there through exemptions. I don't know the, the amount, we, we have the list of businesses in town and I wanna go through and see how many are actually in the village districts right now. Do we have whatever X amount? What's that?
I wish I knew, I could've checked that.
No, no, I don't, no, no, I don't, no, I'm, I'm willing to, no, that's why I, you, you did plenty with it and uh. And I, I appreciate the, the list, that was, that was good, but that's. Listing out how, where they all locate in the, in the town.
Well, so yeah, Liz has got a question, or Liz has got her hand up, go ahead Liz.
Um, so, so I just, I mean, the question I ask is, like if you have a small area. Um, you know, just set aside the issue of spot zoning, but if you have a small area. And, and there's a use that somebody wants that would be, would be allowed by special exception if they could meet the criteria. Um, what is the benefit of converting that area to a commercial district? Um, it, it's, it's a small area, um, it, it can be. Um, you know, if it's low impact, if it's not gonna bother the neighbors, um, then. Um, if it's an appropriate use for that location. Why not just let somebody go through the uh special exception process?
I, I would, I would agree with you, I think that's, I, I don't have an answer that, that would uh, that would say otherwise, I think that's. I, I think that's a, that's one of the benefits of our, of the system right now, I, and, and I think. Hearing, you, you said that more than once and I, and I agree with, I agree with that, I think that's. One of the things that we lose with a commercial, with deeming a commercial district would be. The, the option of, of uh really looking at each individual business. But that means also if we do have a, a. If we took the landfill property and, and created a commercial district there, then we could, we could designate what businesses we want to allow there and be very specific. So there might, we might be able to get around the idea of just allowing any bu- any business in there anyways, you know, that. That would be something that the town would be able to decide.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, I think that, that's why I think having a, a limited in a small commercial, and this is me personally, a small commercial district. Um, is, would be a, would be very low impact in the sense that we could, we could really. Regulate it easily, if we were to take the whole, the whole one twenty-four all the way through, it would. It would open up, it would open up a lot more discussion as to what businesses are allowed and not, and not allowed. Because we already have so many different businesses on one twenty-four right now.
I hear you, I get you.
With regard to that, um, hundred and thirty-eight acres Josh, um, would the town sell? Pieces or would they own the piece and then just rent?
That I have no, that's a, that would be a question for, for the town and I'm not sure how we would, how you would pose that question, like I. I think uh that was just a, a suggestion as far as that, that's. That is a large chunk of property that the town, I don't, and like you said, as far as the, the wetlands, I don't know what percentage of it is even buildable. I don't know that, that access to it, you know, if we can even have, if there's fifty acres there, that's, that's. Really buildable and, and accessible, I'm not sure. Um, I just know that that is a, a fairly large chunk of property that the town owns. And is the, does it benefit the town right now to own it? My, that's not a, I don't know, but at the same time, if there is a, a need for a certain thing in town. And, and you can go around the spot zoning in this, in the way that you can make that. A certain commercial district, then it might make sense. And that's, I don't know that it is, I don't know that it isn't, and that's, this is more, I know we, we've talked in that spot zoning is, is like. No, but I think if you look at it, there's a few things that, that would. Meaning to believe that you can, that you can do it as long as it's, as long as there's not, not a direct beneficiary. And, and it's mostly what the, you know, fits the towns need, but.
It was potentially greater benefit to retain ownership and lease the property out, but I don't know, like my.
Yeah, but then it doesn't get polluted, cause I mean, I've rented places and people have left drums of.
Yeah.
Chemicals that were very expensive to get rid of.
I know that's, that was talking to, to the real estate agent, the, the idea of the, the town owning a piece of property and doing that leasing. Would, would be really hard for the, for the town legally to do that, and, and for that reason.
Yeah.
You, you, once you, if, if you are, if you are s- even selling the properties out one at a time. She's saying if you have, if you have an issue with the property, then it's, then if there's contaminants in the property. You now have to deal with it individual lots, whereas if you, if you can. Sell the piece of property outright to a developer of some sort, then, then you, you've essentially washed your hands of that. To an extent, but.
Isn't that some, like we're doing building number two already? If they're renting it out, I mean rent lease, if we're renting out storage to businesses already?
Yeah, 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 it's a little bit different and that is a loaded question, like question, because they're working through some of the uh issues from that. Past lease, but yeah.
Seems, it, I, I, it, just on the face, it just seems like why are, why are we? Why is a town that?
As a favor.
Business of actually renting out property.
Of having, we had, we had open spot that somebody heard we had and it, and it became. An opportunity because nothing was being done with the property, I think that's probably the easiest way to.
Yeah.
It wasn't that we wanted to get into the business of being a.
Yeah, it, it, to me, it, it, it just personally smacked of just. Kind of like a good old boy club taking care of its, its own.
And, and I, I can't speak to that, I think it, it was certainly opportunistic to try and offset some of the loss of an empty building would be mine.
I understand, I mean, you got that, but also it's not like, you know, it just, it just seems. Just on, like I said, on its face, when you, you hear of one business. Exclusively having. In the, a rental property from the town.
And that is, that is the problem, that is the problem with spot zoning. Like that's, that is the, the, that would be the issue that we'd have to work around and, and do it would be. If you, if you did take that property and you were able to deem a certain acreage of property that, that can be sold. Or can be turned into commercial, how do you, how do you actually sell it off? So that, so that the, the town isn't looking at it going, while you say it's not benefiting anybody, but. That guy, I, I didn't get that opportunity and that, that's, that would be a hard thing and that would be the one thing with leasing and with. How do you, how do you do that? How do you get rid of that property really?
It seemed like a can of worms, like really turned to illegal battles and.
Josh, if we were to look at like the last year, two years, three years, five years. Do we, do we have an idea of?
Good night Liz, good night, I won't be too far behind you.
Good night.
Hi, um, do you have an idea of how much demand this town has had? For people wanting to do commercial things?
That's, that is a, that is a good question, I do not have the answer for that, but it is, that is a uh. That is something that I, that I will reach out, that was, that was one of my questions for the, for. The uh zoning board and, and when I talked to them as far as. What, how many applications do we get for, for properties in the, in town?
Yeah, I mean, is that demand for commercial growing or is it steady or is it dropping?
Well, and I, I also have to ask, how many businesses are in people's homes? That, I mean, you certainly brought this up last time is, how many people have businesses in their homes, cause there's not another place for them to go? And so their neighbors get to the benefit of them putting up a metal building because. That's where they wanna put their business, cause there's none other opportunity. And so I, I don't know if this would help, I'd like to think if it would help. People be rural in the rural district and commercial in the commercial district, there could be benefits, right? There's certainly some tracts of land that people might even volunteer as an, as a, um, there's probably some large tracts of land. That may not have a whole lot of value necessarily for subdivision, people say I'd love to put a, in a, a commercial district here. And I think it would, it would behoove us and they could approach us and say, hey, we got a hundred foot buffer all the way around unless you're going in there. Where there's one sign, you wouldn't know it, and we might say, woo-hoo, have a good time.
Right, except there's one other caveat I would throw in that, and I like the concept of where you go and thinking wise. But um will that business create a whole bunch of traffic? Or is traffic gonna be minimal based on whatever?
Well, right now rural is like the commercial district place, right?
Right.
And, and which would seem counterintuitive in some regards.
Yeah, but if you have a big piece of land, you're gonna put something in the middle and nobody's gonna see around, you'd say that's a no brainer. But if that's gonna have a whole lot of traffic generated because of that, then that's a different issue.
Yeah, if it's a gas station on, on poor farm road, it might be needed, but nobody wants it in there next door, even with a hundred volt buffer, so you know.
And I think that's, I think that is the beauty in our system right now is you, you, it wouldn't be allowed. It, it might say through the regulations, through exemptions, that it could be allowed in the rural district, but. But then you're gonna look, you're gonna go over and you're gonna say, hey, I wanna put my gas station behind your house, are you okay with it? And they're like, nah, I'm not okay with it, and, and so you're gonna have a lot of pushback from the, from the abutters. That's, I think that's where we, where we get a lot of our, of our enforcement through. It, it definitely stifles the, the, the commercial growth through town, but. You don't, you also have a lot of, a lot of control over who's, who's doing what and where. It is kinda strange how many, how many commercial properties are just popped up, if you look at the land use, I know, I looked at and looking through them like. This is, this is kinda crazy how spread out they are, um, but you don't really. You don't necessarily drive around, you're like, ah, this is, what is this commercial, like it, it just. It's kinda New Upsearch and I know it has New Upsearch, so it's not, not uh the ordinary for me, but, but uh. Yeah, there are definitely some on there that aren't listed either, that, that are businesses that. Are listed as residential and, and you don't see them through that, that land use map, but. Yeah, I don't know.
I would rather see our commercial development, kinda like what we talked about spot, but. Uh, my background is, is different, I think because I had seen this go on in other communities. And um, if it's not controlled and it's good that we're talking about this, if it's not controlled, it, it becomes a blight.
Yeah.
Lou brought up vehicle traffic, traffic, well, that's also a safety issue, right? And then it's, it's an environmental issue, I've gone through this before, right? So that's my concern, I, the one, the one thing about one twenty-four is that. It's kind of like, it, it already exists, so you know, people know that there's commercial there. So I, I favor that, that, the, my neighbor developing a commercial or a business at his home. I have an issue with that because to me that's residential property and yeah, we might. You know, as an abut, you might grant goodwill, but you know what, I'm only here for two years, so you know what the hell, sure, go for it. But then somebody else ends up living with it, and I, I think that that's a disservice to the community because people come here for. The tranquility, the, the, you know, what, what's in the introduction to the uh bylaws and how rural we are.
Yeah.
And that the roads are covered with trees and flowers and bees and everything, well, that's kind of a myth, but still.
Yeah, and that's, that is, I, I don't, I think that's. That is why, that is why people come to New Upsearch and I think that's, that is why. Most of the people are still coming and it is a massively growing town.
Yeah.
It's not, and I, and I think the, the percentage of, of businesses that are just popping up in people's backyards, I think is fair, fairly small. That's a, that's a number that I want, that I wanna get, and I, and I'll work on getting that, but, but I don't think that's. I think that concern on that is, is there, but at the same time, I think through. Through our system right now, we may find that this is better, this is better than if you, if you make commercial. All the way up one twenty-four and then try to figure out what we allow and don't allow. With, with the, 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 you know, kinda, we have quite a few different types of commercial on one twenty-four right now.
Well, maybe traffic might be part of the equation, so the person who has a plumbing business. They load their truck in the morning, maybe two or three other trucks show up, and they go off and they do their jobs, so there's an impact. I don't know how you think of whether it's low, medium or high, but I don't think that's high.
Yeah.
As opposed to if you open a barbecue shack and you're got twenty cars every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night. Your neighbors might not be so happy, right? So maybe traffic is one of the things that we consider or, or unique visitors or something along those lines or. You know, I guess one of the things I'm struggling with, and I can argue both sides of this to look blue in the face, but. Um, if I think about Dollar General, as soon as Dollar General went in and people were annoyed, somebody bought the next three lots. And put houses there so they couldn't be commercial, or that's the story that was told around town, I have no idea of the specifics, right? It was probably your family, right, or something, but anyways, okay, good, so.
But thanks, Dee.
I'm not gonna claim them now.
But what I'm saying is that, you know, I, I don't, you hear the stories.
My Jim's family.
But the thing is that would have been. That would have been a better commercial property than a place where there's a whole bunch of houses. And now you're trying to put something in, so I said, I think there's a good and a bad to not having an area that's designated as commercial. Only because then you have more chances of running in, into an adverse situation.
Yeah.
And that's my only concern is that, not my only concern, but it's, I think there, there can be a benefit to having some places. Designated as commercial because buy right, because then anybody who buys around there knows that's a commercial piece of property. And so everybody's on the same playing field, that if you can get all the neighbors to agree in the first place, it's commercial. And now it's kinda like buying on an airport, I have no sympathy for people who buy a house on an airport and then complain about how noisy it is. Right, so um, anyways, I don't know if that.
And that's, and that, to that point, I think that's, that's the case when, with people moving into town now, you, you look at. The property that surrounds you and you say, when I bought my house, I looked at, okay, the land behind me is part of the, part of the uh. The, uh.
Conservation?
No, it's, it's a, it's the, the, there's the subdivision up top, this is their community, their, their common land.
Oh, yeah.
So their common land comes down, so I know that there's no house that can be built there with our, with our current regulations, there's no, no way to do it, so I'm. So I have a, a lot on each side of me and then behind me there, there can, but that was something that, a decision I made. We looked at many lots, many houses, and, and that worked. There's, that is something that, that people need to realize when they're buying a piece of property as well, that. That, that, hey, there's, there's potential depending on where you are. And if you don't know the, the town, that's, that might be a problem for it, but at the same time, you, you have to know what you're buying and what, where, you know, it's an, it's an investment that you, that you personally have to know. Um, so it is good to, it is good to try to limit the commercial business that can go in behind somebody's house, but at the same time, it is, it is also up to the person to be involved in, in their purchase as well. I think, I think my main thing with this is trying to figure out what, what we can, what we can do as far as, uh, questions for, that will go towards the, the master plan for, right? So I think that's basically, we're just gonna be figuring out, how do you, how do we ask the right questions? And so getting the information that, on what our commercial district, I think as far as your, what our, what our need, what, how many applicants are, uh, there are right now for commercial properties for business in town? Getting that number, what, how has, has that grown, has that stayed flat? Um, getting that number down so that we can actually revisit and go, hey, that's, that's actually, this is something that, that needs to be on the, on the questionnaire or needs to be a big, a big part of it. Or it can be a, a, you know, just a, a smaller portion of it, but, but, uh, I think that's, I think right now that's where.
The planner that I'm gonna talk to, she may have some idea as well of how we can track, um, business information.
Yeah.
Whether it be through, uh, permits or business licenses or something on taxes or, you know, on, on the assessor's card. I know there's a bunch of properties that have like a business, there might be other ways we can try to identify what, what do we really, what's our mix in town?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
New Hampshire's one of the largest small business states in, in the US, so we know we have lots of small businesses, where are they hiding?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, yeah, trying to identify, you know, on that, on the list of businesses that, that you, that you find online. It's, it's, uh, you know, there's way more than that. Are they actually, are they listed through the town? Are they, are they just somebody that has a name in there, you know, on their truck? Is it, what is, how do you identify it and say, what is actually the impact of all of that small business as well? Meanwhile, we have a lot of, a lot of.
In this town, if you have a business in your house or if you like approved to have it, does it, does that business pay a, a different ta- a specific tax to the town for that business?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we don't get, so we don't get to track it that way, cause I know in cities where you do and that's a, a very common way to decide, are we gonna take a particular road and maybe close it off to vehicular traffic and leave it only as foot traffic? Because in the way they decide yes or no on that has to do with taxes, but obviously an extra, special excise tax that could be looked at and you can see where the concentrations are. But what you're saying is we don't get to use that measurement here.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I can do reporting in Avatar and I figured I could run a report of commercial versus residential. And there's really nothing other than what I gave you for.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you can see who, you know, who's been registered with the state, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, offer a true
Yeah.
picture of it either.
Well, that's what I had to do with that report. I took, um, Secretary of State. And I could only, you have to search by every business, so I actually went to Mantra Chamber of Commerce, Yellow Pages, created the spreadsheet there and then matched it with the Secretary of State to see if it was legitimately a business, still in business.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that technique that I was describing not only says where the businesses are, it says how much they're making. So then we would know that there's a, that, that concentration is not just there, but it's very viable. Which would then allow us to say, hey, this is a particular zone that things have worked and well in, maybe we should think of putting a commercial districts in this area.
Again, is that part of our culture that's been historical, that it's kinda like, we know there's lots of home businesses? As long as you're not in a place like, our, our subdivision technically has a prohibition on home businesses. But we all work from home. I think it's as long as you don't put out a sign and you don't have, you know, but again, I think that's, home businesses is part of the culture of New Ipswich and it's, as long as your neighbors aren't, aren't complaining about you and you've, you keep good boundaries, then we kinda, and, and there's not a lot of traffic. Um, then we kind of acknowledge that, good to see you Josh, good to see you Dee, you know, and off you go.
Yeah, no more in back than having your kids jumping up on your trampoline.
You, I got a trampoline, he's got a dump truck or vice versa.
I might have both.
So we're gonna have some questions and I think there's a, as we go through the questions that were actually asked on the master plan, which should be part of the next session, I think we'll start to say, we'll, we'll pull up that parking lot list. We had, we started a parking lot last time, we'll pull up the parking lot list and we'll look through and say, alright, what needs, what do we need to consider as we have these discussion groups that are just imaginary in my head right now? Um, but hopefully, but over the next two weeks, we'll start to see more of, of the direction we wanna head. Unless you, there was anything specific you wanted to do more, you wanted to do tonight?
I, no, I think I, I want to move forward with trying to getting a hold of the zoning board as far as for, for my next portion of it. And obviously, if there's anything else that, that you think we might want to lean towards, I think, I personally think that's, that's where I wanna go, but I don't, obviously there's other, it's, uh, I'm op- I'm open to.
I would think that, uh, Josh, one of the things, um, that you should at least take a small look at is low-cost housing. Um, that seems to be, uh, impacting, uh, this, this, the state's driving it very hard. Uh, Jaffrey, uh, if you, uh, perhaps, uh, within the last week, there was an article in the Ledger that talked about Millipore and how it's requiring additional help and the governor went and spoke there uh, about, um, helping Jaffrey, uh, develop low-cost housing, which would benefit Millipore.
Which would, yeah, which I, that's, that's kinda, that's interesting because you would say that, that seems kinda controversial. As far as, for one, where we would, we would hope that Millipore is putting out a good enough wage that they don't require low-income housing.
Yeah, it's, uh, they, they actually address that in the paper, uh, it, it's, uh, essentially fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and that's not, that's beginning salary supposedly. But anyways, I just bring that up because, I mean, the governor came just the other day for that very reason, to announce this bill and saying, hey, you know, we're going, something like two point three or something million dollars was gonna be pushed to Jaffrey to look at this, to look at this issue. We don't have that kind of industry, industry in town, but still.
Yeah, we, we almost did. We almost had Millipore in town by the sounds of it. And, and that's one of my, one of my things that I say, it's, I like our system because we now don't have Millipore in town. And only for the fact that, that I, I think the, the, I don't, I don't see the benefits of the, of what is required for the infrastructure for the town to support Millipore as far as then what they return for taxpayers.
There you go, because it's not just a, a cost that the owner incurs. I, I believe what you're saying is it's, it's also a cost that the town will incur to, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's another factor as well.
So one of the things that we might even look at is, you know, how much of it, I think you're right, the types of commercial business, because, um, rental housing, or we talked about condos previously, might be very different. And would people be willing to have that in their backyard as opposed to a machine shop? Or, or something, I mean, there's different things I think that may appeal to people and we can work into the master plan questionnaire um, a- as we get together. You know, we, we are gonna have some things we're gonna need to solve too and, I mean, I'm twenty-five years from coming out of, well, more than that, coming out of college, but when I moved back to New Hampshire, a starter home was two hundred thousand dollars. And, and then a condo was a hundred and fifty thousand, right? We're probably close to that, if not way more than that now. Starter home was what, three hundred plus thousand?
Three hundred sixty-five according to yesterday's, uh.
So then I went to North Carolina and bought a house for seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, that, that we do live in an expensive area, so I mean, we certainly have to figure out how are we gonna do that? But maybe we do some incentives for accessory dwelling or, I think there's some other ways we can do. Um, the other thing that occurred to me, and I don't know if we could do this, is could we have a commercial district? And this would be something that might make Liz's head explode, but is there a way to do like a, a buy-up program? A, a commercial property that's been in town that then is incentivized to, to grow and stay in town somehow?
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's viable or not, like if you'd have to make something available, if the, if the starter size is fifteen hundred square feet and we make a di- a district that you can go to five thousand square feet, is there benefit there and or, you know, could you incentivize then people to keep their businesses in town and shift from a smaller place to a bigger place and then somebody else moves into the smaller place, you know what I'm saying? Um, I don't know if there's a way to create a pipeline, a, a business-sized pipeline. And I, 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 I'm talking totally out of my head right now.
Yeah.
Um.
Can we make a motion to adjourn then? That's the case if you're just talking?
I am. Is there anybody else that has anything they wanna say? Nate, you've been awfully quiet. Are you awake or do we need to nudge you?
Yeah, no, I'm here. I just, I've got another Zoom meeting myself after this with my, uh, eleven siblings.
Oh, sweet.
Nice.
Sweet, never did we look so easy as compared to eleven siblings. Alright.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Alright, all those in favor please say aye.